The agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, we have our agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions about that, or want them to be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council through the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Yeah, is there any discussion? Now, those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and those have been approved. All right, presentations. First of all, addressing commercial vacancy and maintenance present- presentation. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to speak to you today. I haven't met all of you, so I thought I would take a moment and introduce myself. My name is Stephanie Sweeney, and I am an MPA candidate with Western Carolina, and I've been the summer intern at the city of Hendersonville. So, I've done several projects for you this summer. But this is the main one, and it's about addressing commercial vacancy. Okay? All right. So why would I choose this topic? It was really something that the downtown, well, the Downtown Advisory Board and the Economic Vitality Board, as well as, you know, talking with Jamie and Lou. This was something that has been top of mind for our citizens. It's in the Gen H Comp Plan. I did do research of how it's being utilized in North Carolina. I reviewed how other city departments actually utilize commercial building information, analyzed the Hendersonville Commercial Building Code, and now I have some recommendations for implementation. And I wanted to touch base on our current process and give you some things to consider. All right. So, this slide, just so you know, it is 609 King Street. And what we currently know is that 120-plus commercial buildings are vacant within city corporate limits. Downtown vacancy rate is around 10%, and I would tell you that we would love to be a little bit more pinpoint accurate with that. We just don't know enough about the upstairs areas on Main Street and 7th Avenue. We are currently trying to work our way through that. But it's not as easy as it seems. So know that it's very close to that, and we feel very good about that number. It's just not as exact as we would like it to be. But I wanted to give you some context when we talk about vacancy rates. So, what's a healthy vacancy rate? Healthy vacancy rate is between 5% and 10%. So we're certainly within that, within those parameters. North Carolina's average vacancy rate is 20%, and in the United States it's 19.4%. And that is as of July 2025. So, we're doing good. I know it's still something that we see every day, so it kind of festers with us a little bit more. The other thing that we know about vacant buildings is that it certainly is a drain on city resources. It requires time with our code enforcement officers. Police and fire certainly spend more time responding to these areas. Plus, we don't get the tax revenue that we're looking for out of it, and then we also get the bonus of blight. So, nobody really likes it. So, the towns and cities that are reviewed, and the reason that we kept it to North Carolina, as I'm sure some of you do know, we stuck with North Carolina is because we are a Dylan's rule state. And that just means that we have to have permission to do something before we can do it, where other states, as long as it's not restricted or written out in the code, they can do whatever they want. So we didn't want to give you information about something that would not be applicable for North Carolina. So, I reviewed 17 cities and towns in total. They vary in size. I will tell you that it seems like it's a little bit heavy on the vacancy registry side. But know that some of those were cherry picked for me, and then I went through and added more at the end. I would tell you that the only one that kind of mirrors us in size of population is the city of Kings Mountain, although I have been told that they go a little rogue, so they might not necessarily fit us personality-wise. Just saying. Not trying to bash them or anything. So, you know, what is, what did my research reveal? It's really in its infancy. And, you know, I wish I could give you more information, but, you know, we just haven't seen what the policies and what happens when you implement this. We don't know what kind of long-term effects it could have. I will tell you that only seven used it out of the cities that I looked at. And typically, they were at about a 30% commercial vacancy rate. So, really didn't kind of mesh up with what the situation that we're in. It would require a process for registration. My recommendation would be to start with a small administrative fee to list, larger fee for compliance. Considerations that will add to time is needing it to be codified by the City Council. Estimate of 10 to 12 months to actually get the process started from being, you know, form is created to you have an operational list, and that might actually be pretty optimistic. It doesn't address underutilized properties. And you would really need to create an education campaign for property owners. You really want them to understand why it is that you want to do this. Otherwise, I think you could come off looking like you have a little Freudinshada if you want to shame them a little bit to have them listed, and that's not certainly what we would like to do. So, this building is 201 North Main Street. The building has never been occupied since I've actually been in Hendersonville, and I've been here for 12 years. So, it's another one that I know we have all seen that we would like to see occupied. All right. Oh, by the way, it's listed for, I need to go back. It's listed for $2.5 million, just in case anybody's thinking about moving their toy store onto the, yeah, just saying. So, I wanted to give you the fees comparison. They're kind of all over the board. You know, I would say that the majority of the cities that are utilizing the vacancy registry are doing no fee to register or a minimal fee to register, and then the impact is on noncompliance or a continuation of actually being on the list. I wanted to put that in there for you, so you would be able to see those. So, what we did find when we were doing this research, when I was doing this research, is that there could be another alternative to addressing the vacancy registry without having to go down the list of a vacancy registry. So, my recommendation for you would be to consider a commercial building list. We already have some information available through the fire inspection, commercial building list, water usage records, and code enforcement. It would be, it would require a more proactive implementate, or, you know, enforcement of the commercial building maintenance code. I would certainly recommend prioritizing vacant and underutilized properties first, and certainly focus those on the major commercial corridors, even going outside of Main Street and 7th Avenue. I feel like we all know of places on, you know, Asheville Highway that certainly need to be addressed as well. Considerations, you would certainly need to create a way to bridge that information, and it would need to be able to be updated. And I would recommend, and this was suggested by the Economic Vitality Committee, to host a community conversation informing the property owners about the change in enforcing, you know, or renewed enforcement of the Commercial Building Code. And I think that that just sets the tone in the right way. This building is on Locust Street. It's 400 Locust Street. Sorry, I tried to give you a little bit of love from everywhere that I go. I did see pretty buildings here, too, just so you know, but I had some things that I could choose from. I will let you know that we're going to say on the next slides, or coming up slides, that the CEO, I think with the implementation, we do have two code enforcement officers, where before we had one. And I think that gives you an opportunity to really kind of look at these. I wanted to give you a quick snapshot of some of the lists that Jamie and I have been able to put together. This is without pulling in information from the Fire Department and the Water Department. This is just walking by the place and finding out that it's empty or knowing that it's empty. Now, certainly, what I'd love you to also realize is that this is a living, breathing list, and it will need to be refreshed, and it's a moving target. Literally, we were just sitting down today, and there's two more buildings that I need to update to the list. So, there's things that are happening in our area pretty quickly. All right. So my recommendation for the action plan would be, of course, to host a community conversation about a renewed focus on implementing the commercial code. I would consolidate the information from the Hendersonville Fire Department, Water and Sewer and Code Enforcement. Recommend sending out a letter to property owners, letting them know that your property has been identified as being vacant, and that there's issues with it, and that you need to know that regardless of whether you live here or not, you're required to maintain your building up to the Commercial Vacancy Code. The CEO, the code enforcement officer, would be required to, of course, compile pictures and documentation, schedule inspections with the property owners, document the statuses. Not everybody is going to be uncompliant. Certainly, compliance is cheaper than anything, so we would hope that a gentle nudge in the right direction is what will get them into compliance. And then begin enforcement of properties not in an approved process for compliance. You know, certainly updating this list on a quarterly basis until you get into that 5% realm, I think is reasonable. Possibly, we'd move to a biannual, you know, updating of the list. Maybe you're going to find that that is too much. Maybe it's going to be better to do it annually. But I think as long as you're measuring it, people are going to focus on it. And certainly, just keep repeating until the process gets to the point that you like it. All right. So what would code enforcement be looking for? There's 26 items listed in the commercial code that we are all currently required to, if we own a commercial property, to maintain. I didn't even give you all 26. I gave you the ones that I felt like would be, these should be obvious, right? So, you know, the thing to remember is that I think with having the second code enforcement officer, you have an opportunity to possibly start implementing this later on this year, or even early next year. Where if we did the registry, we would be looking at least a year out before we'd even be getting to see some traction. So, this piece, they told me that I was, that my writing was way too small, so I fixed it. I love Phil from Art on 7th. He will tell you exactly how he's feeling as he does it. So, you know, the first thing that happens when a code enforcement officer, or you've indicated that you have a property that is in distress, right? You have to identify that violation is there. You're going to probably get, you know, somebody from the community, or somebody has indicated that there's something that's there. The CEO is going to do a background check on the property. Is it even in corporate city limits, or is it in the ETJ? You know, what kind of rapport does the owner have with the police, with fire? What kind of engagement have they had? You know, if they need egress to the property, it's going to require an administrative warrant. These are all things that are going to take time, and I gave you the arrow going in both directions to let you know that you can get hung up on any one of these steps for any number of things. After the administrative warrant is issued, you can do a preliminary investigation with a site visit, taking photos. You have an evidence of the violation. You have to issue a date for an administrative hearing. Has to be within 10 to 30 days. Has to be in Henderson County, and must be an open hearing. If the violation is upheld by the administrative hearing, then you have to serve papers. And then, City Council is going to be coming into that scenario, because I'm sure they're going to contest it. Here, the CEO also has to, you know, weigh whether it's, you know, the damage of the building. Is it worth more than 51% of the building? Then, you know, they can have some, you know, financial, you know, I don't know how I want to say that. There's a little bit of guidance in the code to where if you're not forcing them to do more to the building than it's actually worth. There is some protections if it's located in a local or a national historic district, and the City Council can determine what the value is of that. Failure to comply can get you, City Council can use the civil penalty of $500 a day. So I think you're pretty much in line with what I saw in the other aspects. Certainly, what we're all looking for is the property to be in compliance. You know, and I just, I would love to tell you that it would go in nine easy steps, but I think after cascades, we all know that it's not nine easy steps. But wanted to at least refresh you on those pieces. So, when I presented this, I went to internal code enforcement and to the legal staff. I also presented this to the Downtown Economic Vitality Subcommittee and the Downtown Advisory Board, and they had some feedback for me that they would like me to bring to you. They would like you to consider adopting the downtown-style guidelines from the Gen H Comp Plan for the entire downtown footprint that's outlined in there. I think specifically for them, they were very concerned about drive-throughs and things that don't necessarily match the character of 7th Avenue, and they wanted to see if they could mirror more of the things that are already in place on Main Street. They want more information, pros and cons of whether 7th Avenue would be, would benefit from being a historic local district like Main Street is. They liked the plan of addressing the vacancy. They wanted to know how we were going to take this plan and drive tenancy. And, you know, I think Lou was very clear that I can make them clean up their property, but I can't make them rent their property out or be reasonable as to the value of their property. So, I think that will take some thinking, you know, to put together. They certainly would like to see that public, the property list, public. And then they would like an indication, I think we had the owners for Scotty's, the old Scotty's building. She's in the process of repairing her building, obviously, and she wanted to have credit, you know, like if you're in the process that it was happening. Also, they had a concern about occupied buildings also being forced to comply with the maintenance code as well. So, something that I would like for you to consider is the possibility of instituting a business license. And I would like to start by saying that I don't want you to think that it's a privileged license, which was revoked by the North Carolina General Assembly in 2015. I think it went into effect in 2016. That's not what I'm asking you to do. I do think that we need some type of registration for businesses in Hendersonville. And the reason that I think is obvious, some obvious things that would indicate to us is that it's going to tell us about location moves, changes in building uses, locations near sensitive neighbors. And I think sensitive neighbors, I think of schools, I think of religious institutions. And I kind of think of the cannabis dispensary that's right across from the high school that I'm sure that we would all want something different than that. Certainly, an education campaign for the benefits of a business license program. Not every business owner was super excited about that. I know you're shocked to hear that. But I think you have an opportunity here to incorporate the business license with your fire inspections. You can roll a small administrative fee into, you know, the fee that's required for the fire inspection. Take some heat off of the fire marshals. I think they would appreciate that greatly. Best practices from the research that I also found, not just from vacancy registries, a keyholder requirement, where an agent must live within 40 miles of the property. So, you can be the owner and live in Miami, but you have to have somebody here that can be at the building within two hours for an inspection or for an emergency. That was, I saw 25 miles, 50 miles. I felt like 40 miles would get you to Waynesville, which I think is reasonable, or even to Greenville. And then, increased safety measures, egress lighting, motion sensors for vacant property. I'm sure the police would probably have a list of things that they would like to see in some of those properties that are just a pain for them. And then, I wanted to give you a positive building. This is Bellwether's Landing on 7th Avenue. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work for the city this summer. And I am open to any questions or concerns that you might have. Thank you.
I have a couple. Do you, so with this type of program?
Yes.
Whether it's a registry or a list, is there any, like, long-term or like evidence-based practice that it shows decrease in vacancies or increased occupancy in communities? Like, are there numbers to see, like, that it works?
There isn't, but I would tell you, Jen, that I think that what gets measured gets done. And I think if it is on a list and we are all aware of it, I think that you will see some movement. Now, is it going to take you to zero? No, I think that's unrealistic. And I think honestly, even going from 10 to 5% could take you about two years. Just because people, places are going to come up, they're going to come off. But no, I don't have any evidence for that. And certainly, the vacancy registry hasn't been in place long enough to do that. But my only argument is, you know, what gets measured gets done, and what we do with the information, I think, could be vital.
Do you know if the Business Advisory Group also saw this presentation?
I did the Economic Vitality Board, and I did the Downtown Advisory Board. And then, I presented to Angela and to the code enforcement team. So, I did, those were the only three groups that I presented to.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, of course. Ms. Simpson?
I don't have any questions, but you did a lovely job.
Thank you.
For doing all of this research for us, because I know this is something I've been particularly interested in for a while.
It was interesting. It was something that I'd never heard of, so I was very interested to hear what it would be like as well. Excellent.
I have one.
Yes.
Thanks. How long does a building have to be empty before it meets the, before it becomes vacant, or before it would be considered for a vacancy registry, or?
You know, that was one, Gina, that was one of the questions that came up at the Downtown Advisory Board. And some never even hit the market.
Okay.
You know, like, I would tell you that the Emporium Market on Main, the Christian Science Monitor Reading Room moved out, and I think that they had their "coming soon" sign in before you could even think about it, right? So some things move very, very quickly. In my mind, I think that the ones that are the most egregious are the ones that have been vacant for a year. But you also see that there's things that need to be done. Certainly, the building, the old Jane Asher Building, the building space is so big that, you know, the developer has decided that they need to split it into two stores to make it a footprint that's acceptable for a current or a modern merchant. So I think that makes sense. But, you know, there's others that just aren't moving. And there's no, there's nothing happening. And I know that Lou would tell you that, you know, a building is meant to be lived in and have life in it, otherwise it will continue to degrade. How did I do? Was that pretty good? Okay. I've heard that a couple of times, so I feel like I got it. But yeah, that was, that was a concern. And I think that was part of the reason that the Economic Development Board wanted to see a notation of buildings that are in progress, right? And maybe they don't make the list because they're in progress, you know? And I would hope that the, you know, the people who own the properties that are being realistic about having somebody be a tenant for them would be open to the idea of the list to see if they could get more people interested in coming to the property.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. All right, next we have Jay Fitzpatrick to talk about the Shuffleboard Club.
Before I start, I just want to say I hope I don't insult anybody. Over my adult years, I've been president of many associations, and I hate it when people come to give a presentation and read it. Well, I have to read it. I have so many things in here from so many people that if I leave any of them out, I'm going to be shot, okay? So, once I read it, I will be happy to answer any of your comments or questions or anything, but I have to get all these things in. It was supposed to be, I was just going to talk about Shuffleboard and all the good things it does for Hendersonville. And then it came with the Bridge Club, and then it came with seniors and senior activities. I don't like to say no to anybody, so I took a lot of their stuff and put them down here. And I'm going to read it to you, but you know, what I was surprised is that some of the people that I talked to thought that the city of Hendersonville was against seniors. And I was shocked, okay? I've been president of the Shuffleboard Club for the past 15 years. Everybody I've worked with in the city of Hendersonville has been fantastic. Any help we needed, we got. So, I don't know where they got this from. I don't know. I told them I would talk and give their viewpoints and everything else, and then if you have any questions, I will be happy. It's got a couple of pieces of paper here, and that's all, okay? I'm not going to be here forever. But, okay, mayor, city manager, council, city attorney. My name is Jay Fitzpatrick, and I'm the current president of the Hendersonville Shuffleboard Club. Working with the mayor, Barbara Vogt, the city manager, John Condon, and Tom Wooden and his recreation department staff has been a delight over all these years. They have answered the call anytime a problem arose at the facility. I really appreciate this opportunity to address the planning board, the City Council, and to bring everyone up to speed on just what the Hendersonville Shuffleboard Club does on a daily basis, and what benefits we bring to the city of Hendersonville each and every year. Our registered nonprofit club has been a mainstay senior organization in Hendersonville for well over half a century. We started across from the Hendersonville High School in the early '60s. Then, the miniature golf came there, and now the Fire Department is there. Our club received permission from the city to make and maintain shuffleboard courts behind the Woodmere Building in the early '70s. The Shuffleboard Club paid for the construction of all the courts and also the $35,000 addition of a roof over 10 of the courts. We have held the International Shuffleboard Championships, international, it was amazing, in 1999. And we have hosted the full United States National Shuffleboard Championships. And when I say full, it means men's and ladies singles, men's and ladies doubles, and mixed doubles. Nobody else in the country hosts them all, okay? Like, throw something in, in May, Florida wanted to host a singles national championship, and they decided they would hold it in May. How many people like to go to Florida in May, outside, in the sun? It didn't turn out too well. Everybody likes coming here, okay? We've held it since 1982 every year. The National Shuffleboard Association has a requirement that any member state must have at least a minimum of 14 courts in order to hold a national tournament of any kind. We have our 14 courts at Tom's Park. This information was conveyed to the group that the city has hired to give them some options going forward. They did not take this info into account in any of the four plans they presented. One of them told me that this must, this information must have gotten lost somewhere in the process. Probably did. Now, just a little history. Back in 1982, there were zero full-time Hendersonville residents and only 28 part-time summer, that's one to four months, that were members. But in 19, I'm sorry, but in 2023 and '24, there were 43 to 50 full-time local residents who took advantage of what our club offers, plus over two dozen other summer residents. Most of these local residents did not play in any Most of these local residents did not play in any of our shuffleboard tournaments. They joined our club for social interactions, not for competitive sport. We consider ourselves one of, if not the best, senior activity destinations in Hendersonville. Now, since the beginning, as I said, we were a nonprofit. Back in the 60s and 70s, when we decided to move over to the Tom's Park area, we had a little over 40 members. And those 40 members chipped in with their own money to build all those courts, okay? They didn't go out looking for anything. They, they built them all with their own money, okay? A few years back, we were able to build the roof over 10 of our courts. The roof cost $35,000. One of our members, who never played in a tournament, left us this money in her will because she didn't like watching the games and they have to be stopped when it started to rain. This bothered her. She was active in the, the women's groups that we had. She went out with us to dinner at night, came to all our potluck dinners, but she never played in a tournament. Yet, she left us the money with directions to build a roof, which I just think is fantastic. Just this year, found out that we have another couple, again, you know, not everybody is as well-off as a few of our members, but another couple has pledged $3,000 for first-place money in the national tournaments in 2026, just as an incentive to get the people back here who might not be coming this year because of everything that happened with the hurricane and everything. So, they're putting up $3,000 of their own money just to attract people here. It's fantastic, it really is. Now, all the club activities offered at the Hendersonville Shuffleboard Club have been available on a year-round basics, basis except outdoor shuffleboard in the colder months. Obviously, we offer competitive district shuffleboard tournaments from the end of May until the third week in August. And these tournaments are divided, are followed by the North Carolina State Championships and then all the national championships. And this ends somewhere in the second or third week of September. Over the past years, besides these tournaments, we have offered many other activities for seniors. You probably don't know this, oh, that's, these activities have included non-tournament shuffleboard games and fun contests, women's poker and other card games, men's poker, chess, double-deck pinocle, cribbage, other board games with cards and/or dice, mahjong, Scrabble, and any other games or activities that any group of four or more that come to us want to participate in. We oblige them, okay? We are a senior center, all right? We also hold monthly potluck dinners from May through September. We are truly a senior social club. Last year alone, we had over 50 players and their family members who came to Hendersonville just for the state and national championships. Every year, we attract more and more families to Hendersonville and many end up as either full or part-time residents. The woman who runs our tournaments now, up until the nationals, her and her husband came here from Texas. They rented, went back, and they rented and came back, and now they own a place here. And it's, it's not the only one. A guy who came up last year liked it so much, it was his second time up, the last time was 10 years ago. He went right out and bought a place and he has his son-in-law and daughter fixing the place up and he's going to be back up here in about a week or two. Our secretary told me that in 2024, we had 146 individuals, almost all seniors, who were full-time or part-time members of our club. Our 40 or so full-season members who play tournaments are passionate about the game of shuffleboard, as I am, and we strive to win as many state and national championships as we can. When some of the very best players from all over the country come to Hendersonville every year to showcase their talents, we want to showcase our talents as well. So far, we have not embarrassed ourselves. We have also had church groups come and use our shuffleboard courts. Last year, we even had a birthday party for a Hendersonville resident and 20 of her closest friends. Our local business sponsors have brought their employees over as a group to have a fun night of shuffleboard. They just have to meet our age requirement of 16 and sign the waiver. We really hope that the city sees the benefits of allowing the shuffleboard to continue to use the courts and the facility, especially the courts which we built going forward. Now, in Florida, California, Arizona, and Texas, most of the shuffleboard courts have an air-conditioned clubhouse, just like we had until the hurricane. It is possible to continue to play shuffleboard at Tom's Park without an air-conditioned clubhouse as long as we would have restroom facilities. But in order for us to continue to be a real senior center, we really need an air-conditioned and heated clubhouse, and that keeps everybody active all year. Having the Hendersonville Shuffleboard Club continue as the best senior activity center in the city seems to me to be the best way to go, with between 60 and 90 seniors' uses per week. And the city does not have to worry about any insurance costs, liability, paid staff to watch these seniors doing their activities. It looks like the fiscally, financially responsible way to go. We pay our rent to the city each year and we know, because of the agreement we have in the city, the city's not getting rich with what we pay, but it covers all our expenses and gives the city a little profit each year. Now, the Bridge Club, our rental neighbor at the Whitmere Building until this year, also fills a need for seniors, senior bridge players. They always have between 100 and 200 players four or five times a week. I doubt very seriously that the city could find any better use of the facility than addressing the needs of between 100 and 300 local seniors as it does now with the current renters, the Shuffleboard Club and the Bridge Club. I think that sometimes people forget that not all seniors are able to be active and on the go at all times. In shuffleboard, a senior only has to stand for four or five minutes, and then that senior can sit down while the players at the other end of the court take their turns. In bridge, the seniors are constantly using their minds, which is very important in staying alert and keeping up their mental health. Our Shuffleboard Club has had players who went out on the court with a cane in one hand and a cuss stick in the other. There's a bridge player who lost one of her feet. We had a special handicap sign made for the parking spot right next to the side door, so she parks there, nobody else does. She has her cell phone, she calls up, tells them when she's there, somebody comes out and helps her up the stairs, and she sits in the first table as soon as you go in the door. So, we've been working with the Bridge Club and trying to get along with them. When they have a big tournament, we vacate our side and we let them use it for their cafeteria. Now, I myself kind of had a bad reaction to the COVID shots. I was, I was one of the people who got what they call POTS. I don't know if some of you heard it, when I first got it, nobody, even in the hospital, heard about it. But now, everybody knows about it. There's like 3 million old fogies like me, over 70, who got it either from a reaction to the COVID shot or having long COVID. They can get it both ways. What it does to most people, it's a disorder of the autonomic nervous system. My nerves weren't talking to each other. And when I was sitting down, it was fine. When I stood up, if I stood up more than three or four minutes, I'd fall over. The nerves wouldn't tell the other nerves to send more blood with the oxygen that your brain needed to stay alert. They, they come up with ways to take care of it. There's always a way to take care of something. It's amazing. If, if I told you that as a senior, they told me to take this pill and take a teaspoon of salt every day, minimum, you would think having high blood pressure would be bad for seniors. But they wanted my blood pressure at 150. The pill they gave me shrank my blood vessels, so with the higher blood pressure and a smaller vessel, the blood with the oxygen was able to get to my head and brain, and I was able to stand up for 20-some minutes without holding on like I am now. It worked great for two and a half years. And then they said, oh, you got to be 82. We have our rules. We got to stop the medicine because you shrink those blood vessels, you could get a stroke. We don't want you to sue us. I said, okay. So I found this other place, I don't know if anybody heard of, up in Asheville, one place only in all of western North Carolina. It's called a Gyrostem. It's used primarily if you have vertigo. It like cures 99% of all vertigo. And they put you and they strap it, it's like, like electric chair, and you spin around and you go up and down. Well, it helped me a lot also, and I can stand now for, without holding on, I could probably stand for 10 or 11 minutes. And really, if you're not going shopping, that's really all you need to do to, especially when you're as old as I am. So, there's always a way around things and shuffleboard, greatest sport in the world for me. You stand up four minutes and you sit down, okay? You don't have to stand up for a long time, so I love it, okay? So, I'm, I'm happy that we, we have the shuffleboard this year again. I'm happy we're holding the national tournaments. Once you lose a national tournament, New Jersey is looking to get it, we could never get it back. And that would be a shame because people love coming here. I think that a rebuilt Whitmere Center, housing both the Shuffleboard Club and the Bridge Club, is by far and away the best use of the facility from both a financial and per-person usage. I mean, we're talking about, this is really the Hendersonville Senior Activity Center. It's probably cheaper to fix it than going anyplace else or doing anything else. I, I know from Florida, I was president of the condo association down here, FEMA likes to put as many parcels of land as they can into floodplains. I think there might be a little friendliness between them and the insurance companies, but I ran into something that was awful. We're on the west side of Federal Highway. A Catholic church is on the east side of Federal Highway. East of that is the intercoastal, east of that is the Atlantic Ocean. We were put into a floodplain, but the Catholic church wasn't. It's, it's who you know and what you know sometimes. And I was able to negotiate with them. And we have four buildings and I was able to prove that only one of our four buildings was really below their, their new line for, for floodlines, so. They, they will work with you, okay? You don't have to take everything they say as gospel, right? I know how devastating this is, the September hurricane was, but it was a once-in-a-lifetime occurrence. I know five to seven years ago, the Whitmere Building area grounds also had flooding. I never went into the Bridge Club area, but we're both on the same level. But our area had two or three little puddles that were only about an eighth of an inch deep, nothing. We threw some towels on them, we took the towels off. About an hour later, everything was dry. This was a freak, okay? Our courts outside had about four to five inches of mud on them. It took four days for us to clean them off, we know that. We know we do that, no big deal. When the courts were built, we knew they could get wet because of the creek. We built them anyway. Two weeks ago, we had some water and mud on the courts because we had some heavy rain. I don't know if you remember that, but there was no real flooding. But as it turns out, our drains drain into the creek. And if the creek rises higher than where our drains are, it brings the water and mud back up into our area. So, it took us a couple hours to take care of that. So, we knew the pitfalls when we built the courts. And we agreed to maintain the courts and the area, including the trees and shrubs, mulch, painting, et cetera. We really love this facility at Tom's Park. We just hope it continues and it continues in a good way. It makes everybody have a good chance to do something there. Giving all seniors a place to get involved, both physically and mentally, is very important. We have a 25 to 30% senior population in Hendersonville. They pay taxes and support local businesses, and they do not put a strain on the school system. We do not want to lose our reputation as a place where seniors can retire in a senior-friendly environment. Back in the middle to late 90s, the reason why my wife and I moved to the area was because we read that Hendersonville was in the top 20 places to retire. Since then, and that was back in 96, it has once been recognized as one of the top 10 places to retire. And in one publication during one year, it was listed in the top five places to retire. Seniors have played an important role in the growth of Hendersonville. A whole cottage industry of 55 and older communities, assisted living communities, incremental care facilities have blossomed in Hendersonville over the past 30 years, and the industry is still growing. But competition is also starting to grow. Fletcher, Arden, Tryon, Columbus are all advertising like crazy to lure the seniors to their area. But Hendersonville has a couple other things going for it. They have a great park system and they have a tremendous hospital facility. It has also been known throughout the area and the whole eastern coast that the shuffleboard capital of the mountains is Hendersonville. And the Bridge Club is the center of bridge in western North Carolina and also upstate South Carolina. It would be a disaster to lose this reputation. We experienced a once-in-a-lifetime catastrophe and the hurricane found its way to Hendersonville. It is extremely unlikely that anyone living now will ever see this during the rest of their lives. Six or seven years ago, we had the torrential rains and as I said, the water came up, didn't hurt the building. You know, and so now, the EPA, I guess, has said, well, now you had two floods, so you're in a floodplain. Well, we kind of knew that. Don't you think the people who developed Tom's Park and built the Whitmere Center knew there was a possible recurring water problem? Do you think that's why they built the Whitmere Center so high off the ground? I do. The Shuffleboard Club knew of the possible water issues and still built the courts. After all, the name of the city, I'm sorry, the name of the street where it is located is Lilly Pond Road. I mean, there was a Lilly Pond there before they put the courts in. So, we knew there was a water problem. Building back the Whitmere Building to what it was before the hurricane, I think is the least expensive, and it makes the best use of the facility for the most number of seniors. No other use can match the use of a combined Bridge Club, Shuffleboard Club, senior activities programs. I think it's, it's, for me, for all the shuffleboard players, for the bridge players, for all the people in our organization that don't play shuffleboard, they want a place to go, and they are really happy with the place they had at the Whitmere Building. We're hoping that it can be done. I know there's all kinds of different things going on, and everybody's going to be pulled in nine different ways, but we all believe that the best use of that facility is not to tear it down, but just to repair it, and there's a lot of things that can be done. You could widen that little stream bed like they did behind the Publix. That made a big difference. A lot of other little things, better insulation around the doors where the water got in. But it's, it's a good facility. It's not new, but it gets a lot of use, and it has held up very well. So, if you have any comments or questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Guess you covered everything.
I hope so. You don't know how many people went into that report. Thank you.
Okay, and you, you are having tournaments coming up next month?
Tomorrow, we have the state singles. Tuesday, the state mixed doubles, and then we start the Nationals the following Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is the Water and Sewer Commission update. Mr. Connet.
Mayor Volk, members of City Council, thank you. I have placed at your seats a copy of the PowerPoint, as well as a copy of a draft proposal that staff has put together for you, for your consideration. Not asking you to make any decisions today or vote. Just wanted to take the opportunity to go through and respond to some questions that the members of the County Commission issued after their last meeting and give you something to consider, and we'll bring this topic back up at your regular meeting next Thursday. But wanted to give you some information and ask you to consider this proposed schedule. So, we have received a question from the County Commission about what is the next steps? What is the city's position regarding moving forward with our agreements and so forth? And so, we felt like, staff, I feel like we would draft something for you to consider, and we'd make that presentation today and ask you to take a more formal step at your meeting next week. So, let me kind of go through. I put together a timeline of where we are, just to refresh everybody's memory, that regarding Senate Bill sixty-nine, which was introduced in the Senate back in, on February tenth. It was originally filed, and it particularly related to the operation of our utility system and the growth of the city. That particular bill moved forward. It was introduced in February, and then it went to the Senate Local Government Committee with some substitute language that Mayor Volk and I were in Raleigh that day, and were able to see the, the language just a few minutes before it went to the Senate Local Government Commission or Committee on May the sixth. The committee approved it with very little discussion, and ultimately was approved by the North Carolina Senate on May seventh, and then it was immediately sent over to the House of Representatives. After that language, which we all know was not very favorable to the long-term health of our community, of the city of Hendersonville, so the City Council, along with the, the County Commissioners, jointly approved some substitute language to that bill that was approved on May seventh, on June sixteenth, and we sent that to our local delegation immediately following that. No action was taken in the, in the immediate time after that, but then, even after another visit to Raleigh, Senate Bill did, sixty-nine did reappear in a House Rules Committee, this time on June twenty-fourth. And at that point, the language that was originally introduced back in May, and even our substitute language, was not, was nowhere to be found in Senate Bill sixty-nine, and it was, it was modified and had no reference to Hendersonville, and that was approved on the twenty-fourth in the Rules Committee, and then the full House on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Since it was originally from the Senate, it was sent back to the Senate. Again, no reference to the city of Hendersonville. Following that, Henderson County did propose an interlocal agreement for the city approval, on or about, we received that on or about July eleventh. We reviewed it, provided some comments back to the county the following week on the fourteenth. And then, in the interim time between the fourteenth and roughly the end of the month, we started receiving comments or had conversations with our local legislators and other stakeholders regarding the language that we had originally submitted, this council and the County Commission had originally adopted back in June, that there were some concerns at the state level, as well as local level, regarding downzoning, regarding land use, things like that. So, at that time, I asked the County Commissioners to not vote on, not approve, the interim interlocal agreement that we received back on July eleventh, and started working with the City Council to come with, and the City Attorney to come up with supplemental interlocal agreement that we felt like was more in line with what our state legislators would like to see. And then the City Council ultimately adopted that interlocal agreement on August the seventh of two thousand twenty-five. At this point, no action has been taken on the county's interim interlocal agreement. No action has been taken, other than us adopting, the City Council adopting the supplemental interlocal agreement at the City Council. No action at the county level has, has, has gone forward. But still some discussions going on there, and also discussions, but in going back to the original Senate Bill sixty-nine, that language, our original, the original language and our supplemental language is in no bill currently in the state legislature. So, we're in this period of having no legal position regarding, or no specific requirement related to the original Senate Bill sixty-nine or any of the interlocals. However, much of what was in the original, or in our substitute bill and our interlocal agrees, city and county agree to. And we feel like, from a city's perspective, that even though there's no local bill forcing us to move forward, we should move forward on the things that we mutually agree with the county with. So, we'd like to make this proposal to you. We would like to move forward with the establishment of a Water and Sewer Commission, and here's a proposed schedule. There's several things we're going to ask you to, to consider moving forward with, first being Water and Sewer Commission. We are in the process of drafting a charter of that Water and Sewer Commission. The commission will be made up, as you know, of nine members, made up of four appointed by the county, four appointed by the city, and then the chair would be alternated appointments from the city and county. So, for your nine members, we would, so we would draft that charter based on what we have previously presented and what was in the interlocal that we put together. We would like to recruit Water and Sewer Commission members between October and November, end of November, make those appointments, including the chair in December, and then ultimately have the first meeting at the Water and Sewer Commission in January of twenty-six. We, just to remind you that the Water and Sewer Commission membership would be non-political, made up of professional, business, citizen-type folks. We want system-wide representation, and it would very much like City Council and County Commission. This is an important commission, and we feel like the members would receive a stipend. They would be paid to be on the commission, because it would be a significant amount of time and effort to be part of that commission. So, we would propose to move forward with the establishment of the Water and Sewer Commission. Secondly, the other, one of the other main areas of the interlocal was related to annexation standards and land use regulations. That is still the main area that is being discussed between all parties. We would recommend that we continue to have discussions regarding annexation and land use regulations. The third piece, which is, has mutual agreement, would be implementation of a schedule related to fire, work with our rural fire departments. We would involve Henderson County Emergency Management, where we would end up contracting with our rural fire departments around the city in areas where we do grow and annex, establish contracts with those departments to respond on behalf of the city in satellite annexations in their existing fire districts. We would recommend that we move forward with drafting or negotiating contracts by January, with the effective dates being July one, just to get it started on the fiscal year, since we all work on a fiscal year. So, we would recommend moving forward with that. Thirdly, Water and Sewer Planning. We should continue and initiate comprehensive Water and Sewer System Planning immediately. Where are there's economies of sale? Where does it make sense to extend utility lines to serve the county? But it should be involved, not only the city, but the county and other jurisdictions in Henderson County, so we recommend. And then finally, the final piece, which also has, I believe we have agreement, is equalization of water and sewer rates. We would equalize the rates. Continue our equalized rates for water rates by FY twenty-thirty and equalize sewer rates by FY twenty-thirty-six. So, those are our recommendations. Again, moving forward with the items of the Senate Bill sixty-nine and our substitute language that we agree on, and then continue discussions of the others involving our state legislators. So, that is our proposal to you. Again, no formal action is needed. We will put this back on your agenda, but we wanted to present it to you, present it to the public tonight so that it was out there, and I stand by to answer any questions, and staff is here also.
When are we able to adopt the implementation proposal?
My, my suggestion was to put it back on the agenda next Thursday night and under new business, and have you formally adopt it. Because we would also at least have a draft copy, not a copy for your approval, but I think we'd be working toward having a draft charter for you at least to see that before you adopt a implementation schedule. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we had our presentations, and we are at the end of our agenda. So, we are adjourned.